Welcome, everybody. We're going to call order. Scott County is still in the office. And, uh, you know, here we're going to stand and have a long inside. All of that.
I plead allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in the people, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm saying, like, coming out tonight, uh, two more weeks, we'll be back to school again. So, hard to believe that, but, uh, alright, uh, get a meeting here. Adams to add to agenda approval agenda. You probably got anything else to add to the agenda?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'd like to add, uh, discussion and approval of the agreement between Scott County Schools and Valley Health that we tabled last month.
Okay. Should we do that?
Or applies me.
We'll mark that down as K. Uh, super tender report. Thank you, sir. Anybody else got anything to add to the agenda? No, I need motion for approval.
Make it, brother.
Got a motion from Mr. Salley?
Say.
Got a second from Ms. Gillenwater, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, approval of minutes. Our last meeting was July 11th. Uh, y'all had time to go over your minutes for that meeting. Have any questions, comments? Making motions to approve. Got a motion from Mr. McConnell?
Say.
Got a second from Mr. Houseright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, proof of claims. If I got any particular questions about some deals ahead for this past month. If not, I make a motion for proof of claims. Got a second from Mr. Hood, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, public comment. Does anyone like to address the board at this time? Do you just stand up with podium?
Well, not really, but I've got to. I'm not good at public speaking. My daughter's picture's been all over Facebook this week with Mr. Hall. She was the one that was posted on his smart board. I guess my main concern and question is, when I went to the principal, where's the mandated reporting? What's your policies? When I went to the principal, nothing was ever done about it. I felt like I was minimized and my concerns were not valid. And then in light of the social media, I believe people believe me now. So I'd like to see and, you know, find out what's going to be done to prevent this happening in the future.
Okay, so you, uh, we usually don't like much comments, but you brought this up.
Ms. Gillenwater, for my daughter, Presti Lardens.
Okay. Say if you don't like any comment, just this is y'all's concerns, talk back, close the doors. Got anything else to add?
No, I mean, how do we get the policies for mandated reporting? I know I'm a nurse, and that's the first thing I have to do is report it if I suspect any kind of abuse. I felt like the ball was dropped. I went to the principal. I didn't know to contact anybody else. I know now from the Scott County Police Department I should have. I still have a son, and Scott County Schools, I want to know how he's going to be protected. Because if it had been him instead of my daughter, we'd be having a different conversation. He's quiet, and he wouldn't tell me things that she tells me.
So you're saying you addressed this to the principal?
Yes. Not just my daughter's concern, it was other students.
Okay.
And I have messages I can show anybody that needs to see them here.
Alright.
And we did make a police report. I wish I'd known I'd done that sooner, or I would have. I guess that's all I have to say at this point. Some answers at this point, thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other questions, Dr. Allen?
No list of questions. I don't typically answer questions. But I'm a concerned mother as well. I do want to thank Mr. Smith for taking my call. It made it very pleasant. My daughter attends Gate City High School. I would like to know why Gregory Hall was transferred from Gate City to Twins Springs. Probably not going to answer that question. Right? Crickets.
Well, I'd like to say, well, I might, I should be saying this, but, uh, but, a lot of stuff to hear, I mean, can't believe everything I see on social media, so probably shouldn't say it, but, uh, I don't think he was moved because of what you think he's been, but all these things.
I don't believe I stated a reason as to why he was moved. I simply asked why he was moved.
I don't know.
Okay. Okay. Um, so why are you not aware of the multiple complaints through the years on Gregory Hall? Crickets. I understand. My other question is, who is going to take responsibility for failing our children in regards to their safety and well-being? And is anything being done outside of our great law enforcement doing their job? Because they're doing their job, and they started doing their job as soon as they were aware, but why didn't you? And is anything going to be done? I'm not asking for specifics, anybody to be thrown under the bus. Crickets. So what training process or procedures are in place for a situation involving sexual harassment towards a student? I know other counties have training that they have to go through every year at the start of the year, and it involves all of their staff, including janitors. What does Scott County do? And how often is that training occur? Is it yearly? Is it, is it going to be revisited?
We, we do sexual harassment training for all of us.
Okay, thank you for answering that question, Mr. Smith. I do appreciate that. Okay, so you said it happens, it occurs every year, and it's for all staff. So I assume something is going to be revisited since something fell through the cracks, seeing as how there's been complaints for years and not just involving Gregory Hall.
I can reach and know any kind of complaints or anyone that we're dealing with, we absolutely want to review this, and we can prove that, we know how this is done.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. So we're going to make changes. So how can you reassure parents and what changes are going to be made for us parents that have concerns with it being swept under the rug for years? When a student can go to a principal and complain, and it's downplaying, and our students have to continue under the intimidation of, of a pedophile, or a predator, or a creep, what can you do to reassure us that our kids are going to be safe? Because again, my daughter attends Gate City High School. I need to, as a parent, be confident that things are not going to be, continue to be swept under the rug. Had this been my daughter involved in this, it would have went a completely different way. As well as if you had known, it would have been a completely different situation, right? Why is there not better communication? And again, how are you not aware of who you have employed under you over the care and safety of our students? It's your job to know.
I will say, eight years I've been a student, and if we've ever heard any kind of complaint, I'm acknowledged of it, that it is addressed and is looked upon. Now, like I say, I wouldn't believe everything that you read on Facebook, but...
Would you like to see my daughter's picture that was posted on the smart board from Mr. Gregory, and he's standing beside of it?
I'm just...
That's harassment. Whether you call it sexual or not, that's harassment. I've got it right here, and this was shown to the principal. He called her inviting and had other students come watch TikToks, and it continued to play over and over. That day she came home bawling.
The main person is school board member. I can also state that I've not heard anything about it.
So you've not seen this picture or heard about the complaint? That was made November 15th? Because I've got messages between me and the principal, and it was told that it went to his supervisor.
And being a small...
So if that's a failed communication, it needs to be fixed.
Exactly. Being a small town, as Gate City, and small schools like Gate City and Twins Springs, and we're not aware, when the whole community is aware of the character and reputation of this teacher that's dealing with our kids, and you're not aware, Mr. Templeton?
I understand, I understand.
Hmm, okay. So help me understand why myself and other parents should allow our children to continue in the Scott County school system, when I know you said, Mr. Smith, and again, I thank you for answering the questions. I thank you again for taking my call, because others are really good at avoiding calls. So I thank you, and I do, I do respect you for that. But again, when procedures aren't followed, and our children are afraid to speak up to anybody, because when they do, it's played down, and they're made to feel like they're the issue. And again, they have to continue under the intimidation of a teacher that's over them. I mean, it's, help me understand how that is okay? Help me understand why nothing is done?
And that too. And there's issues that we have. We are going to add additional trainings for our folks. We're going to go, partner with CPS if we need to do that, and make sure our folks know what our procedures are. We're going to put those things in place and make sure that things are reported, how to be, and make sure all of our kids are safe.
And there will be...
I'm sorry for your experience too, uh, I'm sorry.
It didn't happen to me, it happened to my daughter.
I know, I'm, I'm sorry for her experience.
Thank you. She was humiliated.
And had to continue as human, as being a teacher... Over her grades and everything. I just think that that picture needs to be painted very, very clear, and I also want to make it clear that somebody needs to take responsibility for this. Now, our sheriff, our officers, they've all stepped in, investigators, like I said, they're doing their job, and I'm thankful that we do have somebody that's doing their job, but somebody needs to take responsibility for this. I personally do not feel comfortable or okay with my daughter being in a school system with the same people in place, and I hate for anybody to lose their job, let me say that, I do. I hate for anybody to lose their job, uh, whether it be elected, or hired, or whatever. But this is complaints that have went on for years in Scott County. There's teachers that I've been told are still in the end of the system, and that's rumor, that's probably neither here nor there. But how long before it becomes reality? Perception is reality. My perception and my feelings right now are that I can't trust, or other parents can't trust their kids in your care as far as their safety is concerned. I mean, as I spoke with Mr. Smith, and I told him, you know, we all know we have to worry about school shooters and whatnot, this is something that we shouldn't have to be concerned about. This is something that should have been handled years ago. But instead of addressing, uh, the student, instead of being, it being followed up on with a student, guidance counselors getting involved, teachers, whatever, first contacts, however your all's training is, that didn't happen. It was swept under the rug. The student was approached like they were the issue. We cannot disrupt somebody's life because you think they're weird, or you think they're different. That's how that was handled. That's how that was handled. You can sit there, Mr. Templeton, with all due respect, and say you can't believe everything on social media, and I agree with you 100%. You cannot believe everything on social media. But I beg to differ with you when it comes to complaints. We know every complaint will not be valid, we know everything needs to be investigated, but nothing was investigated. And I'm sorry, there's too many complaints throughout the years. It's like the saying, where there's smoke, there's fire. You all did nothing to put the fire out. Again, how are our kids going to be safe in your all's care? When you all are not aware of what's going on with the people that you have employed to be over our kids? I know that you will not know every teacher, but we're a small community. If the students know, you should know. Whether it's valid or not, every case should be treated as though it's valid until it's investigated and found not to be. Procedures were not followed, you all dropped the ball, and there needs to be responsibility.
Thank you, you did great.
Any other wish to address the board?
Yes.
Can I say your name?
Yep. Even if it wasn't sexual, that's harassment. And I can also say the messages were put in the...
Wasn't that I heard your daughter was removing the class?
Yeah, I remember. Here's one student that submitted a complaint and afforded a ten teacher from the principal. Never investigated. My daughter's complaint should have been enough, but I went with four. Oh, there's more. It's sad, it had to blow up on social media before anything was done about it.
Nobody believed me until that happened.
That's pathetic. Your moral objections, she's been to the principal. I've always respected her, but that day, I'm going to change my... The bed didn't install her, I felt like it was a different...
My daughter's just as important.
Your simulation of, of the board is not answering your calls whenever somebody leaves a message and asking to call back. I will call back, but I don't want to answer a call that don't have any recording, because it's spam calls all the time at work, 40 hours a week. But if you leave me a message, I will return the call, and I don't ever have a call for you.
I left several messages for Mr. Ferguson to return my call, and he never did. He was always in a meeting.
Just making that clear. I'll speak for myself.
Absolutely.
Alright, anybody else wish to address the board?
Hey, Jane, I'd like to ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to know, as parents, if when you got no response from the principal, whatever, you have six board members plus an attorney, Mr. Smith, Mr. Ferguson, how was done as contact?
I didn't know to...
We knew nothing, I bet.
I put my faith and my trust in the principal, because he's been a principal of my kids for several years.
And the procedures...
If I was in your shoes, and that was my daughter, I'd be called for the board member or somebody.
Why is the reputation out there that you're not approachable? I would like to ask you that question. And as a parent, sorry...
No, you're fine.
She was trusting the procedures that you all had in place. Why do your procedures not work? Crickets? That's what I thought. Thank you for proving my point, ma'am.
See, right there, that's victim blaming. I feel like that's victim blaming, because I didn't tell somebody else. I told the one person I thought I was supposed to tell.
Another example of the issue. She's a victim, and you're coming at her. Thank you so much, ma'am, for proving our point. Thank you.
You don't get a response if you call somebody, and I bet you nickel I'll get on it.
Well, somebody didn't get on it for years, ma'am, I'm sorry. Thank you for proving our point.
Even if it hadn't been years, it's been since November 15th. Nothing was done. I know for a fact, November 15th, it was reported. And I'm very thankful that my daughter is not quiet and neat, because if she had been, this could have been a grooming situation, and Lord knows what's going to come to light after all this investigation. He could have done more. We don't know that yet, and I hope not, because I'll have that on my conscience for not being more vocal.
See, one else wish to address the board? If not, we'll move to super tender report. I'll hand that over to Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, in your package you will find a copy of the amended approval of the Appalachian Football Association's agreement for 2020-2024 school year. I know there was a request, amendment, I guess it was in section five of exemptions. Did y'all perceive the copy of that, where they did make that amendment?
Yes.
Your request.
I did.
With that being said, I would ask your approval unless there's any other particular questions in regards to this document.
I'll make that motion. No motion, Mr. Houseright? Second, Mr. McConnell, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
And the second agreement is also with the Appalachian Umpires Association proposal, and they too made those necessary changes in section five as requested. Unless there's any particular questions, I ask your approval as presented.
I'll make a motion. Motion for Mr. Sally? Got a second from Mr. McConnell, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item we have is the 10-point grading scale. In your package you will see a copy of the current grading scale and the proposed 10-point grading scale. I know I may mention this to you earlier on, but I would ask that you consider this being effective for the 2023-24 school year.
How's this going to get communicated? Can you just, uh, this question?
First of all, addressed to the principals, and then too, we will share with the community, school community as well.
Mr. Ferguson has this going to convert the previous grades, if they add it. What's going to happen there?
It will become effective this year, Coach Houseright.
That's now effective?
Yes, sir.
Now, electric wacky?
No, sir. Unless there's any particular question, other questions.
I'd just like to explain, I guess, to the audience that, uh, for sure going to the, a lot of other counties around us, we're going to college grade system, 90 to 100 to A, 89 is B, 70 to 79 is C, 60 to 60 is D, get, you know, accoladed to the college schooling system.
We have a lot of college credits, they take the high school too, so I'd make everything count, equal out.
Scott County's one of two or three within region seven that have not gone to the 10-point grading scale. Lee County's had it placed for five to six years, I guess. Scott, Washington, and I believe there's one other in region seven out of 19 that are on a different grading scale than what it's suggesting.
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Hood. Everybody not got any more questions? You made a motion, and I'm going to second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Also in your package you have copies to the provisions that were made within the policy manual. Unless there's any particular questions in regards, changes too were made in the student handbook, a list of page numbers and the headings of which each of those changes have been made. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to this, I ask your approval as presented.
I'll make a motion. No motion from Mr. McConnell? No second from Mr. Hood, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item we have is the school nutrition, our car prices, payment, and debt procedures for 2023-24 school year. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to this document, I ask your approval as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Motion for Ms. Gillenwater, and second for Mr. Sally, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item we have is approval of the Google Chromebook, the one-to-one initiative, uh, a handbook for both students and parents have been created. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to this document, I ask your approval as presented.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What age do you think we start to do this from?
Kindergarten. Even have some for a pre-K.
Some of those things on here, uh, kindergarten, some of them.
No, sir.
It's not. So I don't even, I mean, I live through this thing, and so you don't even have an idea what's going on. Okay, as far as their responsibility for that Chromebook, and where they're supposed to be, and what they're supposed to be on.
They don't start taking them home to their...
They're supposed to take them home, okay? Make sure that...
All, all grade levels have access to them.
Okay. I got some will be kind to do, not more than a little bit. Play the games, everything, yeah.
I'll make motion for, uh, approval of Google Chromebook.
I'll say.
A motion from me, and a second from Mr. Sally, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
At this time, Mr. Robyn.
You should have in your packets, uh, an amendment, it's amendment one to the Special Education Policy Procedure Manual, dealing with Fort Blackmore, and it also covers applied behavior analysis, classroom handbook, and guidelines for that school. July 1st, 2023, Scott County Public Schools petitioned the Virginia Department of Education to change the name of Fort Blackmore Primary School to the Fort Blackmore Center of Excellence. The Fort Blackmore Center offers specialized instructional services for students ages two to 22 with the disability designations of developmentally delayed, multi-disabilities, autism, intellectual disabilities, or other health impairments. Placement is through a referral process. The school is considered a public day school as part of the continuum of special education services for students in a less restrictive educational environment. Special education services in a special education setting in a general education school setting. Students attending Fort Blackmore Center of Excellence will have the opportunity to interact with non-disabled students, but not on a daily basis. Most students attending Fort Blackmore Center receive special education services primarily due to emotional and behavioral needs. The majority of the students also have special education needs specific to academic difficulties, as well as deficits in social skills and executive functioning skills. Occasionally, students may be placed at Fort Blackmore Center due to the severity of behaviors through behavior intervention plan. As part of the change from... As part of the change from Fort Blackmore being a primary school to it becoming Fort Blackmore Center of Excellence, we were mandated to add these policy changes to our policy manual and present that to you as a board and, uh, get your approval for this change. So I'm asking for approval that we add these changes to the special education policy manual and handbook.
Motion approved. I'll say. Got a motion for Mr. Call. Got a second for Mr. Houseright. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Robyn, I appreciate everything you done. Everybody who helped you make your head.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next item we have is the Head Start Financial Report for June of two thousand twenty-three. Unless there's any particular questions, I ask your approval, let's present.
I'm making motion.
Got a motion for Mr. Sally. A second for Mr. Hood. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
And last, or next to last here, we have the Head Start Annual Report for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. This is for informational purposes. Ms. King, I think we need approval for this agreement. Does anyone have any particular questions in regards to this document? Again, it's for informational purposes. The agreement with Valid Health and the use of telemedicine in Scott County schools, uh, I think that slipped my mind.
Is it the last name Coon, the lady Coon?
Yes, Ms. Coon. It came at our July meeting. I was not present. But she did come and make a presentation. What you have on your desk there before you is information that was shared a second time. They did come and visit with myself, Ms. Bowling, our school nurse coordinator, as well as representatives from Valid Health. This is a program, uh, that they would like for Scott County to participate in. They will, uh, at no expense to the school system, provide the necessary equipment within the nurses' stations where students would have access to a licensed physician or nurse practitioner. Of course, parents are invited to participate in person or electronically. But everyone has to get permission in order to participate. So there are a lot of forms that would have to be filled out and complete. Even our staff members would have access to this if needed.
I have a question. Is this like a long-term contract with them? Is this a one-year deal or what is it?
In terms of the agreement, I, they never did officially send. They sent me a draft agreement and I think it would be pending. If we give them proper notice, we could terminate it at any time. That's be my understanding is of yours as well. Yeah, it typically be thirty days notice.
So that's what? You can cancel it at any time?
Yes, sir.
I, I do love that.
I don't know. Again, it'll all be based on participation. I, I don't know whether participation will be allowed, uh, in this regard.
You maybe don't have so much participation, they won't even do it.
They'll, they'll still have it. I just don't know how open our folks will be to letting their child participate if the parents can physically be there, you know, if they're having to participate.
There's going to be another health option, I believe, here in the future. Won't be too open here until I am.
So we're just going to be able to help our families, money-wise?
There's still going to be charges. Yes, it's not going to be at no cost.
But they, they have to sign a contract, do their stuff, and shit, right?
Yes, they'll have to sign an agreement. They'll have to fill out the necessary forms, give them the proper medical background as well as medical information, uh, insurance that they may have.
Even, even if that, they'll have to be called that day if something happens. The child has to use this.
Yes.
They'll have to be called before anything can go forward.
Correct. They will be notified, yes.
Well, I look at it as an option. I mean, parents don't have to participate in it. Speaking from me and my wife, when I work straight days, if I have a kid in school and nurse asks me to come pick him up, didn't have time to work, or call his doctor, I'm in favor of it. But that's just the benefit I think is greatly. But you know, like I said, we're not driving down parents' throats like in the conversation whether they want to use this or not, so.
I think you did get an option to get out of the contract too if you wanted to.
Is this the whole factor of everything here? So, so it's really between the, I guess, the patient authorization in Valid Health or green permission for them to use that. So there's not an actual agreement with the school.
They're not agreeing with the school?
There is a draft document that was sent to them. They were supposed to supply each school, each school with a document. And I do not have that at this time.
And I would be fine with, uh, with approval pending legal review as far as that goes because I've not actually seen that. As far as, you know, because I, I would want to make sure as far as the term that it is what I would expect it to be. And if there's any issues, then we could obviously bring it back.
I'll make a motion with approval of legal review to this process.
I'll say.
Got a motion, you got a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Opposed? We got five to one. Motion carried. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that's all the day.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Uh, I understand we need to enter into closed meeting.
Yeah, I know that we entered a closed meeting to discuss candidates for employment and assignment and performance of Head Start personnel, teachers, teaching assistants, coaches, secretaries, custodians, maintenance staff as provided in section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven, A one of the Code of Virginia has amended.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, all.